District Board meeting of March 20th. The Board did meet in closed session with no reportable action. And at this point, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call it over. And is there, or excuse me, are there any changes to the agenda at this point Superintendent Kramer?
No changes tonight, President Driller.
Thank you. Would there be a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll approve the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. And moving to 7.0, public comment. At this point, is there any public, I don't have any reports or pieces, but is there any public that wishes to make any public comments? That is an item that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Moving to 8.0, Superintendent's report, Chief Learning Officer Kramer.
Thank you, President Driller. I want to start by sharing an update on our collaborative efforts with the Tahoe Truckee Workforce Housing Agency to develop affordable housing. At this morning's Workforce Housing Agency Board meeting, the Workforce Housing Agency Board voted to approve exploring the development of one of our TTUST-owned parcels near Alder Creek Middle School. I'm excited that we're moving forward to determine if that land parcel would work for affordable housing for our employees and the other employees of the Workforce Housing Agency members. And then next, I would like to give updates that tie into our district strategic plan. So in the area of academic achievement, one of the priorities is to provide collaboration opportunities so our staff can continue to grow and learn from one another by sharing best practices across schools. And thanks to the dedication of our educational services team and our teachers, over 30 different teaching teams have participated in collaboration sessions this school year. The Ed Services team is committed to supporting collaboration for any interested teaching teams for the remainder of the year. Then in support systems, a priority is developing opportunities to strengthen student voice. And last week, our school board held a study session that allowed the board to listen to students' school experiences. And 10 high school students participating, participated, including students from North Tahoe and Truckee High Schools. The insights that they shared will inform our district's strategic plan, our LCAP development, and overall decision-making across the district. And I know that we all appreciate these students for taking the time to sit down and speak with us last week. And then in the area of community connections, one of the priorities is to partner with families to develop strong community connections. And last week, we held our first post-pandemic PTO and D-LAC leaders summit. This annual event brings together leadership from our PTOs in an effort to provide information and, most importantly, build community to strengthen working relationships between our PTOs and the district. And then this was an opportunity so that PTOs could learn and collaborate with each other. And for the first time ever, we included our incredible D-LAC leaders joined us, which was a huge success. And site principals were also there, and it was just a great time with a lot of sharing of ideas and next steps. So that concludes my update.
Awesome. I love the fact that we are continually using your strategic plan and we are, we're on track with that. And nice to hear that the workforce housing is moving along. That's nice. The next thing we have on our agenda is 9.0, which is a presentation. Superintendent Kramer?
And for this, I'm going to look to our Chief Business Officer, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Todd Rivera.
Thank you, Superintendent Kramer, President Driller, members of the Board. Tonight, I'm very pleased to bring this to the Board meeting. This is our facilities master plan, which is essentially our roadmap for facility needs over the next five to 10 years or so. And this, a lot of hard work and time went into this master plan, first starting back in 2022 when we selected Lion Akis Architects to help facilitate and create this master plan for us. The last time we had done a facilities master plan was in 2013, 14, so it definitely was overdue. So we went, we've gone through a lot of different assessments, meetings, meetings with partners and community sites to come up where we are today. And I won't talk anymore. I'll let Jennifer Quigley from Lion Akis provide her presentation. We've also brought the draft presentation to the Board twice as discussion items. So you've seen a lot of this information before. So tonight, we're going to focus more on a quick overview of the processes that occurred during the master plan and then moving into the priority projects that have been identified. And with that, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Quigley. Can you turn your microphone on, please? Now it's on. There we go. Okay. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Quigley. I'm an architect with Lion Akis, and I've been grateful to work with the district on their facilities master plan. And I'm here to present the process that we went through and then show you the results of that. So we'll go ahead and get started. Great. So when we do a facilities master plan, there's three main buckets that we look at as part of our process for the implementation of a master plan. We look at what do we have? That includes the data collection, the facilities inventory, and the condition assessment. The what do we want and need portion of that, which is where we get stakeholder input. We review demographics and we look at deferred maintenance to create a needs assessment. And then we take all that information and we, we talk about what does that look like? So through the engagement process, we're able to provide some alternative visions, some draft master plans to take a look at. And we go through a robust engagement process to review priorities and talk about what the needs are and if they're really being addressed in the plans that we present. And then the final piece of that is taking a look at the budgets and some cost modeling exercises to go through to make sure that the master plans, you know, to see how much money we're going to be able to, what the need is basically. And then we'll create the implementation. So I'll talk a little bit more about what that looked like specifically here. The what do we have phase, we did site walks with the architectural and engineering team, the maintenance and facilities departments. We walked every single one of the schools. We had meetings with the MNO department team to make sure that we heard their needs. And we put this all into a very large detailed spreadsheet for each and every one of the schools that you can go through in the back of our appendix for the master plan. But that kind of kicked us off. We then met with the food service department team. We talked about exploring a central kitchen model, the difficulty in sharing multipurpose rooms, and some sustainability initiatives. And then we met with the transportation department and talked about their specific facilities needs, as well as reviewed each of the school sites for, you know, transportation, bus and parent drop-off concerns that we could help solve throughout the master planning process. So the next phase of that is the what do we want? We reviewed the demographics to make sure that we're planning for an appropriate capacity at each school. And we started our stakeholder engagement process. So this pyramid here kind of outlines our stakeholder engagement work plan, where we had a core group that met pretty much on a bi-weekly basis, kind of keep us on target and keep things moving along. We had the steering committee, which were generally monthly meetings where we went through each phase of the process and got feedback as we went along, you know, presenting drafts and getting feedback, presenting additional drafts and getting feedback. We also had site-based committees where we met individually at each of the school sites and had listening sessions where we were able to get feedback, both, both from the very beginning as well as on our draft master plans. And then also meeting with the district specialists. We also had several meetings with our community stakeholders, so both our community partners as well as the greater community of parents, students, neighbors, and anybody else that wanted to participate, it was open to, to everyone. So throughout that process, we put together some guiding principles. So these are five different categories that helped us guide the decisions that were going to be made on this master plan process. Finding opportunity and right sizing, so taking a look at those enrollment data and, and making sure that we're right sizing the campuses for the appropriate capacities, as well as taking advantage of potential opportunities there with transitional kindergarten programs, special needs, special education, portable removal, and district office upgrades. And then making sure we're addressing the infrastructure needs, so buildings have to stand for, you know, another 50 minimum plus years. So we want to make sure we address those needs with HVAC upgrades as priorities, technology improvements, structural upgrades to meet the snow loads, and making sure that we're meeting accessibility requirements, especially focused on the fields and playgrounds and stadiums. The third category was planning for resilience and sustainability. I'll touch a little bit on this in the next slide, but also making sure we're planning for additional indoor space, for activities during inclement weather or bad air quality. And then, you know, what sustainability looks like as far as generators and backup power. The next one here is improving student wellness with state and safety and security. So these are focused on food service improvements, ensuring wellness centers are inputted in each campus, as well as security measures such as fencing and single point of entry, things that we can deal with to make the students safer, even safer as far as traffic and pedestrian congestion goes. So we want to take a look at those pickup and drop-off areas. And then what can we do to respond to the changing needs of the community? We heard a lot from the community and, you know, these guiding principles are in alignment with what we heard for exploring opportunities for after-school programs, joint use opportunities, potential staff housing partnerships, and early education or after-school programs. So we use those guiding principles all throughout our master plan. But talking a little bit more about defining sustainability, this is a graphic that we created to help describe what we're including in the facilities master plan, with the bottom of the pyramid being the most impactful, things that are going to have impact on sustainability as far as the facilities that we're building and planning for. So the behavior is going to be the biggest impact. Next up is efficiencies as far as the building envelope and orientation and daylighting. And then the third tier is systems. So that's where we look at high-efficiency HVAC, electric heat pumps, and LED lighting controls. And then the top of the pyramid is the transformation. Those are renewable energy sources. On the right side, you can see a list here of the items that are required by code. That'll be incorporated by the 2025 code cycle, which all of these projects would fall under, most likely. And you can see there's a long list there that hit each and every one of these categories. Just want to touch on a few things here that any of these codes would be required for a new construction, so any new additions or new buildings, as well as major modernization projects. So included in that is solar PV systems and battery storage, as well as EV charging stations, electric heat pumps, controls, LED lighting. All of that is going to be required in any new facilities that we're building. We also had a lot of good conversations with stakeholders about asset management and what to do with some of the alternative sites, such as Rideout, Sierra High, the district office, and some of the other ancillary properties. So you can see the results of that in the master plan, but just want to let you know that we have had, take a look at a big picture level as we get through those conversations. So here, I want to talk about the stakeholder engagement process and what we've heard throughout the process. I did mention that we met with all of the sites, our community partners. We put out a community survey and we had some town hall meetings. The thought exchange survey was very successful with approximately 1,200 participants there. What we heard out of that was that the top three priorities are in alignment with the guiding principles. So structural roof snow load upgrades, portable replacement for new classroom, classrooms to come along, focus on career technical education, and athletic facility upgrades. Our community town halls were very fun events that we held, both one on the lakeside and one on the truckee side. We gave the community and parents and students the opportunity to vote, to help us get some priorities established. So which are the priority schools and which would be some priority projects? And that helped us align the guiding principles with the priorities that we put into master planning at each campus. So then what does that look like, bringing all of these things together with the prioritization, the budget modeling, phasing implementation, and the master plan alternatives? We went through a robust prioritization process with the town hall voting, which I just explained, the survey results. We always kept in mind those guiding principles. We talked about the must-dos and the should-do, so what's going to be required by code or what's required just to keep the facility standing. We took a look at the construction phasing because that has a big implication on some of the master planning that we're doing so that we can make sure that we're building efficiently, especially when you think about interim housing or the need to house the students on campus during a construction period. And then making sure our implementation plan works for the district. So as a result of our budget modeling that we did for all of these projects here, we've realized that there's a total need for Tahoe Truckee School District facilities of $1.2 billion. So that breaks down to about $445 million on the lakeside and $870 million on the truckee side. With that, the approximate bonding capacity of the district is about $640 million. So there's a greater need out there than we have potential funds for with this potential bonding capacity, which makes us think about some hard decisions, right? So what priority projects we want to do first, what things can be done within our potential funds that are coming? A little bit more on phasing and implementation. You know, I talked a little bit about interim housing. So we do have a plan in our final deliverable here that, that talks about how these projects could be phased on an individual campus to help support the needs of the students during the construction phase. So it's basically a roadmap that'll get you from point A to point B on how to get there, not just the final result. And then the implementation plan here, we have one for the lakeside and one for the truckee side, just to give us a good timeline of when these projects can be done, how many projects we're doing all at the same time, when they'll be kicked off, and approximately how long they'll last. So with that, I'm going to go into each of the schools. I'm going to go a little bit more into depth on the first one, Glenshire Elementary, so you can get a bigger picture of what's included for each of the schools. So every single school in the district will have all of these, all of this information in that. And then when we look at the other schools, I'll just do a brief overview of the rest of them. So this is Glenshire Elementary School. We have some fast facts listed on there, like when the building was built, how many square footage is on-site, the, the capacity of the school that we were using, and some of the planning features as well. We have some photos, aerial images. Then we have the results of our condition assessment. So this is the site inventory where we took a snapshot in time of the 2022, '23 school year. We identified which rooms were being used as classrooms, which were being used as administration, where the gym, the kitchen, and the size of all of those facilities, and how those kind of looked at that time, also the number of portables and what those were being used for. Condition assessment photos. So when we walked all the sites, we took some photos to give you an easy snapshot of what those, what the assessment kind of gathered. And then the plan here, which indicates the modernization that needs to be done on the, on the building throughout the current lifetime of it. It's color-coded, so you can see there's green, yellow, orange, and red. Those indicate the modernization need based on the potential replacement value. So green means it's in really pretty good shape and doesn't need a lot of work. As you get into the red, we're talking about maybe there's some opportunity to do replacement on those facilities because the cost it's going to take to modernize them might be the same as replacing them. The red ones indicated here on Glenshire are portable facilities. So they're not, that doesn't mean they're in bad shape. It just means that we're, have a goal to replace those facilities with permanent construction. Throughout the assessment and the modernization process for each of the campuses, we looked at accessibility, fire life, safety, structural issues, and sustainability. So those are kind of the key points that we touched on when we went through the condition And then our proposed master plan. It identifies the number of classrooms needed, the capacity based on the demographics data that we would propose, as well as any new projects that might happen. So the priority projects on this campus are the portable removal and replace, replacement with new classroom additions. So you can see there's a two-story classroom building here on the west side of campus being proposed. Along with that, we are proposing to build a new library addition. That gives us the opportunity to provide additional space. That could be the cafeteria and an expansion of the kitchen on the backside of that, providing a secondary space away from the multipurpose room for dining. The building modernization is also included in the master plan. Priority project includes the site improvements, which we've identified synthetic turf field at all of the campuses, playground upgrades, parking upgrades, or expansion as requested, and accommodations for snow storage and snow removal here. This is another look at our phasing plan. So for Glenshire, you can see we have relocating those modulars for temporary housing. The current modulars sit where we proposed the new classroom building, so we're going to relocate those so the students have somewhere to live while their construction is ongoing. Then we'll build the other new additions, the library and the kitchen addition. And then with the opportunity of removing those portables once a new classroom building is built, modernizing the campus and doing those site improvements once the portables are removed. So that's an example of how the phasing would work on this campus. Okay, so here's where I'm going to go through some of the priority projects for the other schools. This is Alder Creek Middle School, and I'm only going to show you our proposed master plan tonight. The priority project here at the first level is an administration reconfiguration. We're relocating the administration to allow for a single point of entry at the front of the campus. This also opens up some opportunity to provide some new flexible lab space. So that could be a maker space, it could be a science lab, a CTE-type program, that's to be determined in the future, and some collaboration area there. And then on the second floor, the priority project here is the removal of the portable buildings and a new classroom addition to replace those. So building modernization of, you know, pretty much the entire building would be included in the master plan with focus on the science labs and bringing upgrades and expansion to those, as well as site improvements such as synthetic turf fencing and potential community use building or partnership there. Truckee High School. Priority projects listed here are the structural roof upgrades and building modernization associated with those structural roof upgrades. We have identified across the district certain roofs that require upgrades based on a certain level. And when you do the structural roof upgrades, you're going to be digging into ceilings and digging into walls, and so that's going to require a little bit more of a modernization. So you may see that we're modernizing pieces of buildings that have already recently been modernized, and that's the reason is because we're going to have to go back in, tear it up a little bit, and then make it, make it pretty again. The second priority project here is a CTE classroom addition, right there in the middle of campus. Provides a nice opportunity for some outdoor learning in the courtyard right adjacent to that space there as well. We've also targeted in the master plan portable removal and new additions for this campus, including a new atrium, a common space, a new wellness center, and a band studio, as well as a kitchen expansion. And then when we look at this expansive site, the priority project on the site is going to be that multi-sport stadium that everybody's wanting. So this will include synthetic turf. It'll include a new concessions building that will have restrooms as well as ramps that will deal with the accessibility issues of the variation in levels from the main campus down to the field level, as well as a student quad and provide some other improvements on the site within that area. And then the master plan also includes athletic field upgrades, relocation of some parking so we can create a nice Wolverine promenade in the center of the athletic facilities, and then some additional drop-off improvements. The next school we will focus on is King Beach Elementary School. The main project here is going to be a brand-new addition, which will replace all of the portables on campus. The new addition will house an administration suite, which helps us create a single point of entry and a more secure campus. It'll also be located adjacent to the parking lot, which will just help with the flow of traffic and, and making sure everybody knows where they're going to that single point of entry. The new addition also includes a new cafeteria and kitchen space, as well as a couple classrooms. The old administration space within the building will be reclaim, will reclaiming some classrooms in that area to kind of bring us up to an even level with the classroom replacement. The master plan also includes structural roof upgrades here, as well as building modernization of the areas that were not recently constructed. And then the site improvements on this campus, we are proposing a parking expansion, as well as a new drop-off area near that new front entry to help with some of the traffic and pedestrian congestion that happens during drop-off and pickup times there, the synthetic turf field, accessibility improvements, as well as some new fencing. Okay, and North Tahoe School. This is the middle school and the high school. We've kind of combined the presentation for one. We're talking about the facility as a whole, but do recognize that they are different programs within the same building. This campus, we are proposing as a priority project, the new CTE classroom addition. That'll be located just east of the auditorium there. It'll help us deal with some of the accessibility issues and the variation of levels throughout the building. It'll be a two-story addition to help accommodate that. It'll also include a student union and lounge. And this shows the second floor there, where we're providing a new wellness center. And included with that, we'll be doing some modernization, facilities upgrades to the gym and the HVAC and some extra improvements, some deferred maintenance items that need to be addressed. Part of that upgrade will hopefully include some outdoor plaza or student quad area adjacent to the wellness center and that student union to create an outdoor space just outside of the new addition. And then building modernization is included in the facilities master plan, and we've identified some potential opportunities there to create a STEM lab or a larger classroom space for the needs of the program as they come up. And then on the site plan here, priority project will also be a new indoor field house that will be able to house athletics inside in a space during inclement weather. Will also have restrooms, storage, and some concessions associated with that building. Along with that, we'll be doing some accessibility upgrades with the site that would be required. So that'll help deal with a lot of the accessibility issues on this campus that we've identified. With future plans to expand the track to a 400-meter track, the priority project does include synthetic turf at the stadium, but like I said, the future plan would be for the 400-meter track expansion, as well as the additional athletic field upgrades at the baseball, softball, and practice field areas. Also indicated some parking expansion. Okay, so now we're going to talk about Sierra Continuation High, Sierra Expeditionary Learning School, otherwise known as CELLS, and the district office. And I'll show you why we're lumping those all together. The proposed master plan for this facility would be a phased process. Just making sure you guys see what I see. Where we would relocate CELLS into the district office. That would mean we would modernize some of the district office building to accommodate and some more efficiencies for the office space, relocate CELLS into the building, and then provide a new facility for Sierra Continuation High School. So this would require portable removal, a building addition, as well as some reconfiguration of the CELLS and the administration, this building that we're in, with the hopes to provide some indoor community space along with these projects, to both give back to the community and to try and separate the needs of the two other, other school programs that would be on-site. They would have their own facilities as far as kitchen, dining, cafeteria, multipurpose space, and outdoor playfields. Improvements for the drop-off and parking are also identified in the master plan as part of this project. Transportation services. We We do indicate a new covered bus parking, as well as minor modernization for accessibility upgrades within the facility. And then, I just wanted to touch on Rideout and the Truckee River School. And we haven't identified particular uses within the master plan or locations for potential relocation, like for the Truckee River School, but there are ongoing discussions about that, that the district is going to continue discussions on both of these projects, to see how we can potentially accommodate staff housing or community use at Rideout and the correct location and facility for the program at Truckee River School. That is my presentation. Thank you very much.
Wow, thanks. That was amazing. I just want to make a quick comment, that it's really apparent that you know your schools. Like, there's a lot of schools, and you were able to say, and there wasn't anything on there. You know, that there will be X, Y, and Z, and you already knew that. So, that's really, it makes us feel really good about that. So, thank you. Any public comment on that presentation? Any board comments? Pat?
That was a great presentation. I can't imagine the number of hours he spent walking the halls and poking into classrooms and so on. It must have been felt eternal. I had a question about Glenshire, as I was looking at the class, the number of classrooms, the number of classrooms that was being changed from the existing to the plan, and it appeared that we were losing classrooms, that we were reducing the number of classrooms at each grade level. And for example, I think the most extreme one was at fourth grade, where we were going from four classrooms to two and a half. Am I reading that right?
I'm going to pull it up so I can answer correctly. So, we've identified a total of 31 existing classrooms that were being used during the 2022-23 school year. That includes eight flex classrooms. So, based on the enrollment data at the time, those eight classrooms are not necessarily required if you're loading at full capacity. So, they probably were being used for like, fourth grade and fifth grade classrooms, but they're not necessarily required to meet the capacity needs of the school. So, that's one thing to note. And then, when we look at the proposed master plan, we've identified a total of 31 classroom spaces. So, that's a total capacity of 496 students. That keeps the eight flex classrooms. We have identified potential locations where a third grade, fourth grade, or a shared third grade, fourth grade classroom could go, but you can see, you know, operationally, we don't control that, so they could be whichever grade-level classrooms the school district decides they need at the time. And then, there's those eight flex classrooms to accommodate differing program needs or a lower loading standard, if the school has that opportunity with those eight classrooms to, you know, have less students.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that the flex classrooms and the projected enrollment are the two things that really dictated where we went with the number of classrooms at that school. Okay, great. And I did have another question. The upgrades for the Truckee High Football Stadium, Surprise Stadium, I did see that it said lights, and I assume that means like stadium lights, not walkway lights or something like that.
Yes, both. I mean, we would provide lighting as required by code for accessibility along the path of travel, as well as, you know, we've had talks about stadium lighting that would be included in the plan.
Okay. But, and then I looked at North Tahoe, I didn't see lights.
Lights are also included in the facilities' master plan in North Tahoe.
Okay, I missed that somehow. All right.
I don't think I mentioned it, but it is there.
Okay, thank you. And I just, I know we've met with you so many times, and I've seen this presentation and several others, but I'm still, I was wondering if, I was wondering if you could take a minute and go over the Sierra Continuation School and the CELLS plan again? Because I know it involves this building, and I wasn't, is it okay if we take a few minutes and look at that again?
Let me see if I can pull it back up on the screen. Okay.
Honestly, just repeat it.
Just repeat it? Okay, I can go into a little bit more detail of that. So, basically, we've identified that Sierra, the facility at Sierra High is not in the right location for proper expansion to meet the program needs. So, the challenge there was identifying a new location for a new building, but I think everyone agreed that this general location here on this site is the proper location. So, somewhere on this site was where we were trying to find a place for a new facility. As a goal of the district and one of the guiding principles, it is to replace portables with permanent construction. CELLS is currently all in portables, so that was another goal that we were trying to address with this master plan. So, to restate kind of the plan, the end goal here is that we would provide a modernization and a new addition to accommodate the District Office to this building, correct? So that we could house all of the staff here as well. But that creates efficiencies and opens up a lot of the rest of the building that was originally built for classrooms. So, we'd reclaim a lot of those classrooms, move the CELLS program into those classrooms, make sure they have their own accommodations for a multipurpose space or a cafeteria, so that they could, they're not going across the office as they are kind of now. So, that creates a secure environment for the CELLS program to be housed all in one location with their own playground and facilities there. And then, the next phase of that, once we could remove those portables, would be to build the Sierra Continuation High, a new facility, which would be expanded from what they currently have, so it could accommodate the program, as well as potential expansion there.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. I don't see, I only see two classrooms for Sierra High. Is that correct? Let's see if I can get this to work. So, all the classrooms are blue, so Sierra High would have one, two, three. So, those are the flex lab, the classroom, classroom, and a lab space. Step is also included in this building, so there's three rooms for the step program as well.
Well, I think this is the third time that we've kind of had this presentation, so that it will sink in for all of us, because it's a lot to take in at one time. But I so appreciate the level of detail that you've provided and just the level of comprehensive review that happened to put this together, because this really is a good working document for our district to have, moving forward, to know what improvements that we need to do. And I appreciate the work that went into public engagement, to try and have our students and our community at large, our families all participate in this. And I know that they're not necessarily in the room here tonight, but I do know that it's been talked about in the community quite extensively, and I even poked people again, like, hey, reminder, you know, we're talking about this. And the general feedback that I got was, yeah, the district's doing a really good job of just looking out for what's in the best interest of students. When I looked at it, I thought, it's sort of addressing the whole student, so we have everything from safety to wellness to need and opportunity addressed. And when I put my planner hat on, I look at it and say, the environments that we work in, that we live in, really do have such a huge influence on how we behave, how we experience and just live in those spaces. And I find this to be a very exciting master plan. I think that there's just a lot of good change that will come, assuming we have funding to be able to do these improvements, and how exciting it would be from a student's perspective and from, you know, all of our staff's perspectives, to be in these environments, and it's building on the good work that we've already seen happen in our district, and how much exciting change that's already driven. So, it's just taking it to the next level. So, I really appreciate the level of detail that was put into this and everyone that participated. It's just really amazing.
Thank you for that. Danielle, I totally agree. Chris, do you have any comments?
No, I'm very appreciative as well of the, all the presentations that we've had leading up to this. I just want to reiterate that this, I think it's toward the ends of the slides, right? Yes, the last slide, that Rideout and Truckee River School are just going to continue to be discussed. And that this isn't all one phase, just for people watching or following the process, that not everything is going to happen the first time around, or what have you.
Yeah, we like to think of the master plan as kind of more of a living document to work from. It's a starting place, but it's not the end-all, be-all. There's a lot of decisions that still need to be made.
Thank you for that, Chris.
Yeah, thank you so much for all of the detail and the incredible amount of time you went into designing the graphics.
Thank you.
To say, I know that that's like, a lot of time behind your computer, and it's just wonderful to see it multidimensionally expressed, the way that you did. Very gifted, for sure. And yeah, I definitely appreciate taking into consideration the Sierra High and the CELLS issues that seem to be pervasive. And I'm looking forward to overcoming that obstacle and completing the vision of the district as it was meant to be and as we envisioned it when we started on this journey, right? A very long time ago, at this point. And also, yeah, this is like the Christmas list, right? I kind of like to phrase it like that, because it's like, okay, kids, what do you want for Christmas? You know, and you get the 30-page-long document on your iPad, and it's like, well, I can only really do what you really, really want, you know? And that's kind of where we're at right now, depending on where the polling comes in and what we're able to accomplish with our voters. So, really good work, but we need to set ourselves up for the reality that money will eventually make the decision about what we are able to do.
Thanks, Kirsten. I do want to obviously mimic all those comments that were made for you. I did just make a note that I have a friend whose daughter is wanting to be an architect. I'm like, you got to watch this presentation, just to see how, there's other parts of just drawing, but really well documented, but also explained, and that is, you know, you can draw all you can draw, but to be able to explain it to us laypeople, it takes talent. And I really appreciate the, and thank you for staying with it. Like, having somebody start a master plan and then not follow through or finish it with us because of whatever, has made it really comfortable for us. And I think the depth in terms of which you've tried to get everybody involved, and listened and changed and worked with what we have, and Danielle mentioned that we are in a different spot, that it resonates that you've got some great interest in what we've got going on here, and I appreciate that. And I think you've got, you know, Rob's a pretty good co-partner. I did want to just quickly mention that we did get one public comment on this. Should I read this, or do us make a note that we have it?
It will go in the remarks.
Okay, so we did get one public comment from the Tahoe, sorry, Truckee-Donner Recreation and Park District, in support of sort of the review and approving of the master plan. He did make a comment, and I'll have that in public record, if anyone's interested in that. But Sven Leff from, he's the general manager, did make one public comment for that tonight, and I'll give that to Kirsten. But really excited about this, and I think it is a working document, and, you know, things may change, but again, a lot of this has to do with how much we can get for a vote, in terms of finances and stuff. But, awesome. It's like, thank you for coming all the way up here.
Of course.
We love having you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we'll let you. Thank you so much. And then, now we'll move on to all your, I think that, do we have a motion to approve? Yes, so there it is, okay. At this point, is there a motion on the table to approve, or yeah, review and approve the facilities' master plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the facilities' master plan.
And a, thank you, while in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
An aye. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, great job. Nice work on all that. Congratulations. That was a big deal, and congratulations on all that. Wow, whoo. Okay, resolution number 10. Superintendent Kramer.
Yes, and we're going to turn again to Mr. Rivera.
Thank you. So, I'm very excited to bring this to you as well tonight. This is a resolution authorizing the contract with AZ Bus Sales for the purchase of four electric buses, which were, majority of, majority of that was funded through the Hybrid and Zero-Emission Truck and Bus Voucher Incentive Program Public Bus Set-aside, which we, which the board approved for us to participate in a former resolution. And as we saw and did a tour of the bus just a couple hours ago, it was parked out front, we're really looking forward to seeing how we can utilize this in our current route systems. And a little bit of background on the resolution itself, the reason why we're doing this in a resolution form, as opposed to just a sales agreement, is generally, school districts are required, when they purchase equipment, that exceeds a certain threshold to go out for a bid. However, we can, we can utilize some public contract code to forego the bidding process, as long as there is a competitive bid process through another entity. And in this particular case, the HFIT program, the state of California has already gone through and competitively priced all of the different electric vehicle options through the HFIT program, and requires that any HFIT, funding recipients also purchase through those authorized dealer, which AZ Bus Sales is an authorized dealer. So, with this, we're authorizing a sales agreement with ABS, Bus Sales, for four electric 78-passenger buses. The total cost of that is $1,674,000, of which, the HFIT program through the vouchers covers $1.5 million. So, the district will be responsible for approximately $174,000. And that is all thanks to Tony Lavezza, our incoming director of transportation, and all the work that he did in applying for those grants. In addition, the infrastructure for charging stations at the transportation office, which was installed over the summer.
Thank you for that. And yeah, huge excitement with the voucher program. Nice work on that. Is there any public comment on this issue, or item, excuse me, this issue's item? Any board comments? Kirsten? Kirsten, excuse me. Sorry, went the wrong way.
It's okay. I forgive you. I just am so excited for the whole team. I mean, especially Nanette. So sad to see you leave us, but at the same time, on what a great note, to see these amazing buses be installed and the infrastructure to support them. Remind me again, I'm so sorry, your name, you did all of the research for the grants?
Tony.
Tony. So sorry, I'm not super strong with names, but congratulations on your foresight and your ability to see this coming way ahead of time, to have us be kind of at the precipice of this movement, really is a statement to our dedication to the environment and our dedication to keeping our, this beautiful place that we live in, without being even more damaged by the ongoing onslaught of traffic and cars traveling around here. Our buses are now going to be able to decrease our carbon footprint, right? Am I using the right language? I'm a social worker, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, did it. Woo. So, I'm excited, and the bus is absolutely beautiful. Thank you for giving us a tour this afternoon. That was wonderful. Thank you. Very exciting.
Thank you, Kirsten. Chris, did you have anything? No. Danielle?
I enjoyed the bus tour also, and I was amazed at how quiet the bus is. And I think from a student perspective, it's going to be pretty fun to be one of the first set of students on one of these buses, because they're just so unique. And it's just another extension of learning in our district, right? So, we're taking something that we've talked about, the environment, and now it's in practice, so they can see, because not everyone at home has an electric car yet, so how exciting to have your bus maybe be your first kind of exposure to an electric vehicle, so that's pretty cool.
I just want to say, well done, Tony. It's really amazing, the grants that you got for this. And Todd, thanks so much for everything that you did as well. They sound corny, but I do feel like we're entering like, a new era with electric school buses, which, by the way, sounds like a children's, you know, educational program, the electric school bus. But yeah, I think it is exciting. I think those first kids that are going to step onto that thing are going to be pretty excited, too.
The magic electric school bus. The magic electric school bus.
That's a grateful, that's fine.
That is awesome. Tony, hats off to you. I always ask for those, like, where do we get money, and that's, I mean, there's money out there, and thanks for doing that. It's a chunk of change that you got us. That is huge. And I do agree with Danielle that in terms of what you ask, we try to do, and again, it's, you know, might be California state mandated, but not everyone can jump on it. And I think with the grant and the voucher program, it was, enable us to start on that. Obviously, we'll figure out how it runs. We're going to be wearing jackets on those cold days, just in case the heater doesn't work. No, but anyway, I do think that, there's a lot to be learned, and I do want to just say that publicly, when we did the tour, the buses that were purchased were a replication of our entirely existing fleet that we have, so that the, except for the engine and the transmission, as you said, the pieces and the parts are the same. So we went ahead and did a, you know, sort of a, sort of a look-through, and I don't know how you all did it, but at this point, we have replacement parts for those electric buses is already in our quiver. So, you know, creative thinking and really well done on that, and that's, that'll help save us. And then I guess we'll, we'll have training coming, and then we will learn what to do with, you know, the batteries when they're done. I guess there's a process that we can move those along, but really, really excited about that. That does require an action item, if there's no other comments, for this Resolution 19. Is there someone that would be interested in making a motion for the Resolution 19?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 19-202324, authorizing a contract with AZ Bus Sales.
And a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, and thank you very much for that, nice work. I do want to say that I do believe that the Tahoe Youth Action Team was here at one point to look at that bus, and I think that was something that was part of their interest as well. Yeah, so that was, that was very positive, in that we appreciate you guys being available for them. Moving to consent agenda, any items that need to be pulled from the consent from Superintendent Kramer?
No items.
Board, anything to pull?
Yes, sorry. I'd like to pull 11.1, I'd like to vote on that differently from the others, please.
Okay, you'd like, I'm sorry, you'd like to pull it and then votes?
Yeah, we'll do it as number 12.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Because it can come.
Okay, would anyone care to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 11.1?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as revised.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, this is the removal of 11.1.
An aye, thank you. Okay, so then 12.0 would be 11.1, and...
Before you take a vote, can you please share, just for people watching, the purpose of removing that from the consent agenda? And thank you for catching it.
Yes, of course. One of the items in the personnel report is my wife, Mira, being hired as the musical director, so I would like to abstain on that one.
Perfect. Thank you, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to ask that, but thank you.
I mean, I figured that was why, but...
Well, I know, well, I didn't get a chance to ask him, so I appreciate that. And with that being said, can anyone make a motion to approve 12.0, which was one of the, which is 11.1, with modification? No, just 11.1?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report for March 20th of '24.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you for that, and noted that Pat abstained 13.0. Superintendent Kramer?
Thank you. And for this item, we're going to turn to our Assistant Superintendent Logan Maloney.
Thank you, Superintendent Kramer. Good evening, President Driller and Board of Trustees. The new job description for Educational Services Teachers on Special Assignment is being presented to the Board for information and action. The new job description includes in-house new teacher induction support, the work location to remain at the district office, and up to 10 additional optional workdays agreed upon throughout the school year. Are there any questions from the Board?
Any questions from the Board?
How many tlices do we have?
We currently have three.
Any public comment on that item? And I'll bring that back to the Board for an action. Does anyone like to make a motion to approve 13.1? I'll make a motion to approve 13.1. Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you for that. 14.0 is Business Services, Superintendent Kramer?
Yes, and for this, it's perfect timing, because it's about buses. Back to Mr. Rivera.
Thank you. So, starting in the 2022-23 school year, the state has started allocating funding for home-to-school transportation for K-12 school districts. So with this new funding source, the state will reimburse up to 60% of our home-to-school transportation expenses. And last year was our first year of actually receiving those funds. As part of that program, we are required to do a home-to-school transportation services plan, and in that plan, the focus really is on how we're going to prioritize our transportation services and our routing to accommodate those with the highest needs, low-income foster youth, disabled students, in, as well as the grade, kind of focusing on the grade levels of TK through six. So in this plan, we've addressed that on, and that is how we have done our routing for quite some time anyways, prioritizing bus passes for those highest-need students, and also trying to have our bus stops and routes that are, that are aligned with concentrations of, of students that are in those highest-need categories as well. In addition, we did talk a little bit in this plan about just consultation and partnerships and discussions that we have on the highest-needs routes and bus stops with other organizations as well. And then, of course, there is an estimate for next year, which is based on the current year expenditures for, for transportation, on what we can expect to see as far as the reimbursement. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you for that, and is there any public comment? Board have any questions or comments on that? Okay, I'm excited that we, we, and I think I've mentioned this before, that it, part of the busing is the electric bus route, I mean, electric buses that we've gotten, and we, as a board, I think Kirsten, when you were, even before I was here, correct, that school busing and busing was a big priority for the district. And so I think that, you know, we've continually kept that as a forefront of a, an item, even though it might be something that's mandated, I think it's something that we, as a district, believe is, is sort of important to our success with that. I know that, that, anyway, it's, we do have a lot of miles that we cover. So we are, I think we're pretty well, I think we have a pretty good transportation department with all this, we have a lot going on. But with that being said, thank you for that, would anyone care to make a motion to approve 14.1?
I'll make a motion to approve 14.1 for the Home-to-School Transportation Service Plan.
Thank you, and a second?
All second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, awesome, thank you. That moves us to, A, Facilities, 14.2, Superintendent Kramer?
Yes, and for this, we'll turn to Mr. Rivera.
So a couple years back, the Tahoe Cross-Country Ski Education Association had approached the district about the potential of kind of some mutual benefit agreements. The plan was to relocate the existing Tahoe Cross Country Center to actually a new location, which is adjacent to our North Tahoe Middle School, High School. With that, with the plans for that, they saw some, some opportunities to maybe share some facilities, particularly the parking lot, for accommodating like maybe those high-peak times during the wintertime for certain events. And then in return, the site, school site could actually utilize Cross Country Center for large events, in addition to maybe some, some annual events like dances and prom. So with that, we're bringing a reciprocal agreement with the Tahoe Cross Country Association for a shared parking agreement, and the plan is that there would be a driveway connector between the two properties up by the existing bus barn location. In addition, we would be also constructing a ADA walking path, which would go from the school site to the new Cross Country Center. We still don't know what the timeline of the Cross Country Center construction is at this point, however, there is plans to put on our side of the property, the driveway connector and the walkway this summer. With this, there'll also be a reimbursement from the Cross Country Association to reimburse us for those improvements. Is there any questions?
Thank you for that, Todd, and I appreciate the answers that we had for homework, and any public comment on that? Board comments? The only comment that I will make is that, at this point, this does not indicate that the lodge project is complete or is that it is done, it's just this is part of the process for them to move forward. And if something does happen with that, then this, this, obviously this agreement or this resolution, or, agreement, thank you, I was looking at it, would obviously be null and void, but this doesn't necessarily indicate that it is any further along, except in the process. And it's not that we are sealing the deal with anything at this point. So with that, is there a motion on the table?
I, I'm sorry, I just have a quick question. It didn't occur to me earlier when I reviewed this, but, so if the, if the plan goes through and the, and the parking area is built, is it possible that there will be times when the commute, when the skiers at the Cross Country Center, or the people using the, using it, will be parking in this lot with students at the same time?
No, the agreement is for after-hours and weekend events, and, and events when school's not in session, like during breaks. They anticipate the daily average, you know, usage of, of the Tahoe Cross Country Center will not need to utilize our parking agreement, it's just only for those larger events and high-peak on weekends. Also, there is an agree, within the agreement also, there is supposed to be collaboration between the Tahoe Cross Country Center and North Tahoe High School, Middle School on an annual basis, just to make sure that, that all the events, there's no surprises, everyone knows when a high school event is taking place versus a Tahoe Cross Country event.
All right, thank you.
Right, so that would mean that, basically, I think in the agreement, it did say that whenever the district, because it is our property that is joining, we would then have that, that pathway, but then our park, parking lot is our property and we would get priority. So if there was an event that we had, like the Cross Country, then we would be able to have that on there, and then if they didn't have anything going on in the summer, we would then be able to use their parking lot, right, as an overflow for us as well, but we have priority for our events.
And there will be a gate also installed, the plan is to have a gate between the two property lines, so that gate would be locked, with the exception of during snow removal and during school hours.
And trustee money, that already happens, not with the Cross Country Center per se, but just neighborhood people, you know, who walk their dogs and whatever, they're parking there, and people who are mountain biking those trails. And I know that the North Tahoe administration is proactive in deterring them from doing that, if they catch them, you know, at the beginning, or they talk to them on their return trip, or they've had, one time I dropped my daughter off at school and there was a boat taking off half the front parking lot, and Principal Mitchell was on it like right away. So as far as unknowns, use, people using the parking lot, the site administration's very proactive. Yeah, welcome.
With that, that is an action item. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve the reciprocal parking agreement by and between the Tahoe Cross Country Ski Education Association and TTUSD.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And 14.0B, Superintendent Kramer?
Yes, and for this, we turn again to Mr. Rivera.
Thank you. So tonight, we bring to the Board our 2022-2023 final audit. And I should also note that on Friday, we had uploaded a version of the final audit, which was attached to the SB items over the weekend, however, there was a revision made to that final audit. So we did switch out those documents on March 19th at approximately 10:00 AM. So with the final audit, this is essentially closing out our 2022-2023 fiscal year. Normally, we'd be bringing this to the Board in the December-January timeline, however, we did, we were granted an extension through the state of California until March 15th to submit to the state. The reason for that is because we were still awaiting California Department of Education approval on our J-13 waiver forms, which was basically giving us credit for all of the snow days that we had last year, because we did not meet the required 180-day, days of school required by the state. So we did receive that approval, finished up the audit process, and what I, what I can say is I'd like to thank all of the people involved with this audit. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of information compiling, and it's really a team effort, it's not really just isolated to our fiscal services team, although they are great. It also really hits every department and every school site as well. You know, there's, it's not just fiscal compliance, it's compliance with program requirements, it's everything from attendance accounting to, you know, our meal counts for our food service program. So I really appreciate everyone's efforts throughout the year in making sure that we are complying with all the rules and regulations, but also during the audit process as well. And with that, I won't get into too much detail, we have Elizabeth Sauv here with Crowe LLC, our external auditor, and she will present some of the highlights for the 22-23 audit.
Thank you, Todd. You took my whole spiel, like, took all of my thunder. Thank you for having me tonight, I'm Elizabeth Sauv, I'm a senior manager with Crowe, and we are hired by you guys, actually. Our responsibility is to you as the governing board, we work closely with your management team, but the fact that you haven't heard from us until now is a very good sign. No news is good news in the world of audit. So we are hired to come in and perform an audit over your financial statements, and then we also perform an audit over your state compliance requirements, and then we perform an audit over your federal compliance. So there's multiple opinions thrown into this very large document that you have. To start with the financial statement audit, I'll just read the top paragraph, it's on page one of the actual report. We are responsible for probably about 10 pages of this report, the rest of it is management's responsibility. It's all of their information, we do help put it into this pretty format, but it is all of their responsibility. So let me read our portion. The top paragraph is labeled "Opinions," and it says, "We have audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, each major fund, and then the aggregate remaining fund information of Tahoe Truckee Unified for the year ended June 30. In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities and the other opinion units. That is considered an unmodified opinion." That's the highest level of assurance you can receive at the end of any type of audit that you have. Yes, you can applause. The architect got applause. Give applause to Todd and his team and all of the sites, and it's true, it's all, it's not just the business office, it is, it is really a full-team effort. If you go to the very, very end of the report, because you guys are probably seasoned board members, you just flip back to that very end of the report to see what's actually happened. So there's a summary of auditor's results, it's page 79 of the actual document. And so that basically lays out everything that we do. So we start actually next month, to start for next year. We start in the spring with all of our compliance work, internal control work, we continue through the summer, just working through any other compliance that we can, since the fall is really impacted, and then we finish up, hopefully in the fall, unless there's another delay that the state has created with the J-13 waivers. That was... That was, that's been really unique this year. You guys were not the only ones. That was, we actually had about, I don't know, 20% of our clients that had this situation. Yes. Um, so, um, so like I said, we have an unmodified opinion for financial statements. Um, and, and further down, it talks about internal controls over report, financial reporting. We have no material weaknesses identified, we have no significant deficiencies, um, that were identified, and no non-compliance that was material to the financial statements. All great results. For the federal awards, um, compliance audit, again, we have no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and we also had an unmodified opinion on that as well. Um, further down that page, it'll show you the two programs that we were required to audit this year for federal. Um, so we did the ESF programs, all of those ESR funds that came in. That's the huge chunk of your federal expenditures. Um, and then the National School Lunch Program. So we follow the, the guidance from the federal government of what we need to look at, what we need to audit and test, and we had no findings to report at the end of that. And then, yes. So we saved the best for last, is the state compliance. Um, state compliance is a little bit more unique in that the, um, ability to achieve an unmodified opinion on your state compliance is probably the biggest accomplishment, in my opinion, um, because the state does not really allow for materiality when it comes to findings. So if you have a finding, something that's outside, um, of the compliance supplement that they offer up, um, it's automatically a finding and that can very easily qualify your opinion. So the fact that there, the next few pages behind that are blank, we have no matters to report for any of those, um, you had a completely clean state compliance audit, um, which is a great success. Yeah. As we know, state compliance is where the money, it costs you money. So when you have those findings, not all of them, but a lot of them, um, they have a fiscal impact. And so, um, you know, your teachers, your attendance clerks, independent study contracts, all of it, you know, all of those dates and nitpicky things that really adds up and it makes a big difference. Um, and I think the most expensive findings are your unduplicated pupil count with the free and reduced meals and, um, English learner tracking. It's just, it's a lot of, it's a lot of heavy lifting, and they obviously did a great job. We had no issues that were, that were found, so, yeah. Any questions that I can answer?
Really exciting. Any public comment on that?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. There you go. Um, board comments?
Um, just a question. I think I actually read the audit, the first version, before the changes were made, so maybe it's just a clarification of what changes were made, because I think there was, there wasn't necessarily a finding, but there was a discussion about, um, sort of salaries.
That was a finding, and it's no longer a finding because...
Okay, that's what I thought was the change.
Yes, there was a, there was an updated form in the unaudited actual packet that we did not have, and so we thought, we didn't get the new one that was actually corrected. So that's why it's removed and there are no findings. Yeah.
Yeah, when I was looking at it just now at the meeting, I was like, that's not in here anymore, so I'm glad you said something.
That was the only change, that was made to the report. Yeah, it was a good change. Yeah.
And this is a good example of the state compliance that Elizabeth was talking about. This particular form, um, is kind of checking your ratio of, uh, classroom teacher expenditures compared to your overall expenditure budget, which is kind of, I mean, really has changed over the years. It's kind of an old form, an old requirement that, you know, um, but essentially what it says is that our classroom and classified instruction staff salaries should be 55% of our overall expenses. I mean, in a nutshell, that's what it is. So we originally were at 54.92. So a .08 difference, and that was a finding, but we had done a revision and, and it actually exceeded that 55%, um, so.
That was actually a common situation that happened to other districts, because the level of, um, ESR funds that had been coming down, it's just, it was causing numbers to be skewed. So it'll be shifting back as that money is running out.
Todd, anything else? Chris?
No, just as always, the job, the job to all the sites, the job to your team. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. You're good? Um, it is, as you mentioned, it is a huge effort, and we always just think it's the business department, but I think from my understanding at one point when I was at North Tahoe High, that it is everybody. So it's your PTOs, it's your attendants, it's everything, everything. And so, um, hats off to our leader, but in terms of the actual, everyone understanding how it all fits into place, um, and taking part in the, in making those reports work, and I don't know if we've made different systems that make it easier or whatever it is, but, um, we love the fact that we have no findings and that, you know, that, I mean, it's, it's, uh, I think it's abnormal, correct?
It is, yeah.
So, uh, as much as, um, it's a pain in the, a pain to do it all, and it's really time-consuming, the systems that we have in place seem to be working, and I think it's, um, it's a really, hats off to everybody that's done it, because it isn't just the top level, it's everything, and to have no findings for the state of California is huge.
Yes.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
Nice work. Keep up the good work. Um, thank you very much for coming up and doing that. We love the fact that we haven't talked to you at all. I'm glad we don't know you.
Yes, but I always like to make sure you know that if there was something that came up, we would automatically contact the board president directly, but thankfully, that's not been a problem.
Yeah, that's, uh, I mean, that's, that's great. Well, I'm very happy to hear that. And, um, with that, I will move it back to the board for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, 2223 audit report. And there's our second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Thank you.
15.0, which would be the first read, oh, sorry.
15.0 is the first reads. Back to you Superintendent Kramer.
Yes, and for this item, we're going to turn to, um, our executive director of human resources, Mr. Mike Shepherd.
Thank you, Superintendent Kramer, President Driller, members of the board and the Tahoe Truckee community. This is an info item only, um, on this board policy, and we'll come back at the next meeting, um, should you not have questions or major edits. This policy, uh, upgrade is to reflect, uh, the new law passed in 2022, Senate Bill 931, which really laid out that districts can't discourage or deter people from joining a union. So if we were to engage in that practice, this new law provides, um, financial penalties against us if we do that. So that's why this has been put into place. And also, um, it also reflects new law SB 1131, which extends some protections for, uh, staff, that if there's certain information they want to keep private, um, because of they're escaping, um, you know, something in their life and they don't want their, they want their name redacted, or they want certain things, this law provides us with that opportunity to do that. So with that, I'm, uh, any questions?
Board, anything that you would like to ask Michael? Okay. Thank you for that, and, uh, moving on to 15.2.
Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you. Um, so this first read of, of this policy is, uh, also, um, concerning unions, and we're not, um, the new law, AB 237, prohibits public employers from discontinuing, uh, employer contributions to healthcare or other, other medical coverage if employees engage in work stoppage. So that's just a, a protection for, for employees. So if there's a strike, we can't cut off their benefits. Um, and, um, with that, any questions?
Seeing none. Uh, we will thank you for that, and moving on to 15.3.
15.3 goes to Mrs. Maloney.
Thank you, Superintendent Kramer. Board, I'm presenting a first read of the proposed revisions to the board policy and the administrative regulation 0460, which is about the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP. Um, the policy and regulation have been updated to reflect the new law, SB 114, um, which requires changes to the LCAP for the new 2425, uh, school year. It includes, um, long-term English learners defined as a student who has not attained English language proficiency within seven years of initial classification as an English learner, as a numerically significant subgroup. Um, they've also updated just the headers and clarity and alignment with the policy structure and the LCAP process. Um, and, um, the regulation was also added a timeline section to provide greater specificity regarding what is required with the LCAP dates, um, and not just the writing of it. Um, and then the best practice for, uh, school districts to post the LCAP on the performance overview portion of the California school dashboard. So this will be brought back for action. Um, are there any questions from the board?
Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Pat, yes? Oh, no, sorry. Um, no, but I, um, I just want to say that thank you for being in that position and taking that, um, this whole curriculum LCAP package, um, and we will look forward to seeing that, um, at the next meeting. 15.4, Superintendent Kramer.
Yes, Mrs. Maloney.
Yes. Um, so this proposed revision to the board policy 0520, which is intervention in underperforming schools. The policy's been updated to reflect the new law, again, SB 114, which expands technical assistance from the county to schools based on numerically significant student subgroups, like I spoke about in the previous one, not making sufficient progress toward its local control and accountability plan, the LCAP goals, and has required additional submission requirements if identified in technical assistance based on the California dashboard results. Any questions?
Seeing none. We will thank you for that, and then we will see it at the next meeting. 15.5, Superintendent Kramer.
Mrs. Maloney.
Yes. Uh, so this is a first read of both the board policy and administrative regulation 6143 to reflect the new law, AB 1078, which, um, is a change of language, includes people of all genders, which was formerly men and women, Latino-Americans, which was formerly Mexican-Americans, LGBTQ-plus Americans, formerly lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Americans, and members of other ethnic, cultural, religious, and socioeconomic status groups, formerly ethnic and cultural, to the grips, groups for which instruction in social studies is required to include a study of the role and contributions of. The regulation was also updated to reflect the requirement for districts that offer a health education course to middle or high school students to include mental health instruction. Any questions from the board?
No, seeing none. I will say that we are, um, we, Tahoe Truckee Unified School District is pretty much on the up, upstroke there with the mental health. I think we, um, we're, we're good on that. I'm psyched that we're already ahead of the gang on that. We'll bring that back and, at the next meeting, and then 15.6.
This last one is also, Mrs. Maloney.
Yes. Uh, first read of the board policy, uh, 1431, which is waivers. The policy was updated, again, the new law, SB 114 in '23. In the event the district would not offer any state-required program, a waiver would have to go first to the TTUSD Board of Education. If approved, it would then go to the State Board of Education for final approval. Policy also updated to provide that advertisement of the notice for the public hearing, which is required before the governing board submitting a waiver request to the State Board of Education, includes publishing it on the district website, et cetera. Any questions from the board?
Seeing, hello. Seeing none. Um, we will thank you for that and move on to 16.0, which is board business. Let's start on this side. Kirsten, anything?
Sorry, Ruth. I'm not starting again. Anyway, fast forward, uh, we had a great visit at Alder Creek, and then the other thing I wanted to thank is Lupita for always taking such good care of, um, us in terms of food rationing. It's always very nice to be able to run out the door, knowing that there's hopefully food at the other end at some point, so thank you for that. Uh, and also the artwork in this room is always absolutely exquisite, and I know how hard you and the team worked to replace it every couple of weeks. And it just warms my heart to see art of young children in display in this room. That was always a vision that we had, and now that you're making it happen, I just want to make sure you know that we don't take it for granted. It brightens up our lives, it gives us stuff to look at, and our talented students and art teachers are obviously producing a lot of very wonderful pieces, and I have to say, I'm particularly compelled by the, um, the, the toilet paper roll penguins here. They, they just made my night, and every time you would look up on the camera at the speaker, you could, it was almost like the Academy Awards. You could see all the penguins in the background. And then I also love the fact that it, they really, um, the snow load, the various different types of snow load that we have here is clearly understood by our students, and you have some behind you too, where everybody has a different interpretation of how much snow falls and how, how happy the penguin is or isn't with the snowfall. So, thank you again. Beautiful.
That's awesome. Chris?
Um, I would just like to, uh, thank all of the, uh, high school students that participated in our Student Voice meeting last week, and all of the site, um, leadership that came and that, um, uh, chose the students. It was a, a nice way to do it. Um, we've done it in a different format in the past, and I felt like the way that the room was laid out this time gave them more freedom to share, uh, and then coming together at the end of, you know, they'd already shared what was like really maybe difficult to share. It was just, it was a great format and a great event. Um, and we missed Sierra High School sorely, so we're excited to go to them and, and have the same, yeah, have the same opportunity to hear what is on their minds. Um, I also wanted to, uh, say how great the tour of ACMS was, Alder Creek. It was student-led, uh, with minimal adult supervision, and I thought it was really refreshing, very frank. And I don't know about anybody else's tour guides, but our two tour guides were on fire. They were so excited about their school and their offerings, and that was really great to hear. Um, I did attend this morning, and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember, is it Tahoe Truckee or Truckee Tahoe Workforce?
Truckee Tahoe.
Truckee Tahoe Workforce Housing Agencies, uh, meeting, just to hear about, uh, their efforts and collaboration for affordable housing or workforce housing for local agency employees. And so I was very grateful to go. Thank you for letting me go with you. Um, and lastly, just to our TTUSD, uh, facilities, just thank you for this master plan. I, I feel like there's something I, I need to work out that came up for me during the presentation. Nothing big, of course, or I wouldn't have voted, but, um, just, uh, the amount of effort that it goes into putting that together and all of the meetings that you've had, both with community members and this governing board, I'm very appreciative of that, very excited to keep improving our learning environments for our students. Um, and there's a lot of vision that's been put in there. It's not just like, yeah, let's just grow this or fix that. You're looking at the whole picture years ahead, not just like what we need today. So, um, yeah, thank you for that. That's all I have.
Well said. Danielle?
I don't have much. I did also enjoy the Alder Creek Middle School tour, and the fact that it was student-led was so unique, and, um, the maturity of the students in our group and their willingness to talk to random adults that they didn't know, which I thought was pretty fun. Um, and it was just a, it was nice that we were all able to go, because I know our schedules are so different, so it's pretty unusual when all of us can make the same... are so different, so it's pretty unusual when all of us can make the same kind of meeting outside of this setting, so that was pretty fun. And then, I'm sorry I missed the student-led, um, questions, um, but I unfortunately had pink eye, which is the most random thing to get, but, um, I didn't want to infect you all, so.
You stay right there.
Uh, what you all said with an exclamation point, and I do want to, uh, uh, the, the student-led, um, discussions with the high school kids was, um, insightful, and, uh, they were so mature and, um, and informed, and I think provided a lot of great information regarding what's going on in their schools and their hopes and dreams. And, uh, I also want to, um, mention that the trip to ACMS was, um, well, I don't want to say it was a surprise, or that it was an eye-opener, but it was not what I thought, um, middle school looks like. I had this different sort of vision of pandemonium and, and carnage and so on, and, uh, and that is, I'll tell you, that is a school, uh, the classrooms, we visited five or six classrooms, and I saw calmness and, uh, and kids collaborating and cooperating, and, uh, and I would have to say 100% engagement. I think every kid I saw was engaged in whatever lesson was going on in that classroom. Teachers are doing a great job, and, uh, Principal Larson, uh, my hats off to her, as well as the assistant principals up there, and also my, uh, tour guides, Lucy and Vanessa. So, Mrs. Larson, if you could let them know that I gave them a shout-out, they were great. Couple of sixth graders, very outgoing. Thank you.
That was awesome. Uh, we had a fun week, we did, and I think that, I've heard it from everybody, student voice and student-led, um, is a big deal right now, and I think that we've all done pretty well at, at, um, at sort of putting that out there as a, an option, and I think that it's extremely receptive to everybody, but when a sixth grader, and I do agree with you, the middle school pandemonium is what I expected, um, but when a sixth grader who, I asked them, "How'd you guys get chosen?" "I don't know, we went to first period, and they told us to do it." And I'm like, "Oh." And they, what Chris said, they owned it, like, they were all over it, and they spoke clearly, they said this is what's going on, they knew their school. I did write a note to, um, President, um, yeah, Principal Larson, and just said that I, too, was impressed with the calmness of that whole pandemonium expectation, that, um, really calm, quiet, and then the engagement part was, was actually really good. I mean, it was really fun. Um, I may have a different approach to middle school now, and you, of course, though, don't you have a middle school next year?
I will be fully engaged next year.
I did, I, yeah, we're gonna wait and see. You'll be driving those field trips.
That's where the chaos is.
That, yeah, you, yeah, in the backseat. Um, study session was awesome, and I still love those, um, the school representatives that come in, and I so appreciate the fact that they speak to us, as you said, about a stranger in the, in the crowd, but I think they, they hopefully understand that we will make some changes if we hear it, and I think that they, we're receptive to what they say, because again, it's their schools and, and their learning environment, and if they're not comfortable, or feeling comfortable, or safe, or in, like, the wellness centers, um, that is something that is important. And the, I will say, the Wellness Center at ACMS was awesome, as well as it was at every other high school. Well, that ACMS one was stunning. Um, I also did the, with, uh, trustee Pat and Superintendent Kramer, we went to the comm meeting on Thursday of last week, and, um, we have an empathy questionnaire that we are, we're having to ask some questions. Interestingly enough, though, most of the things that I was looking at in the, the president board, you get all these things that come through, and so many things were about empathy, teacher burnout, managing home life and work life, um, emotional support, wellness centers, um, so it's interesting that what we're working on is, is, is out there. Um, it's, it's everywhere, but I think that we, I feel we are, we're addressing it with union, with staff, with, um, board, as well as exec, so, um, I think we're, um, we're actually moving in the right direction with the current trends. Um, that's it, exciting. I do know that there was some TK previews that happened last week. I didn't get to go to any, did anyone do that? Yeah, we are starting up to get ready for next year, if you can imagine that. Um, and so, I know that they were out, and, uh, I hope, hopefully will get to see that. And then, I think this Friday, we're going to North Tahoe School. Okay, um, it was kind of cool having all of us at something different, like, that's, it was a big deal to get us all there, and I think that that's something I really, I'm glad we were able to do it. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:06. I did see something somewhere, that we have a, a winner. Thank you, Ari, congratulations. Okay, now, 7:06.